These new fangled things.
Might be coming. All right, does everyone have chance to look over the minutes?
Lieutenant. I'll set that.
Over there?
All right.
All right. Got some business? Dave and Larry. Hey, most of them. All right, do we have anything for all of us now?
What looks that like? We said that before. I'm not going to hand it out like, oh, that's me over here.
You want to discuss the book, we could come.
We have a guy coming tonight named Barry. He's going to tell us what he's proposing to do on, I believe, US 52. I have worked the last two weeks to make sure the water's available to where he's at. And the Suge, which is a forced main, we have that worked out on how to hook into that. So, that's what he needed, wasn't it? And the rest is up to you to explain what you're doing.
Can you stand right up here? Don't mind.
The whole world's watching. No, yes, we have a, we're just moving into Shelby County. We did last November. And we're moving from Ohio. And we have a business there where we sell outdoor lawn furniture, hunting blinds, vinyl playsets, portable buildings, fire sets and things like that. And the business does, has been doing really good there, but now we're two and a half hours away. I had somebody there working that one, but eventually we want to phase that out and be solely here. And so for the last year, we've been looking for a spot to do this. And it's, it doesn't have to be on a busy road, but that's better, more people drive by and see it. It's not a necessity usually, so you see a place that you keep seeing it drive by or furniture or whatnot. So our one in Ohio is right on the main street going to the city, it's right in town. We've been looking for different places. We got six acres on the east side of Morris Town here that we're going to do that. And then we decided it was just too far out. So I talked to Dana about this corner here on River Road and 52. And we still haven't finished all of our stuff yet, but he just, his board sent me a contract today. And so, yeah, the, the plan would be, and how we did it there was we started small and we eventually bought property beside us and redid some buildings and it was good for the community, it was good for the, the longer Matt went on the business.
I'm interested in vegetables, too.
Yeah, that's, that's, there's no, we want it to be somewhat of a farm store, but I, but we don't know how far that would go. There are, you know, we grow our own food for the most part and cattle and that. And we take it to Greenfield, New Polos, I mean, we were saturated the first time. And so, I mean, I could have a place, you know, but that's not finally after, that would be in the vision. That we ought to sell meat and cheese and farm stuff, vegetables. There's been a lot of talk about bakery and that was not, not where that all started.
The rolls, you guys give away.
Yeah, we gave some roll down there.
We didn't get it here, no.
But anyhow, but, yeah, I mean, the, the possibilities are, there was some talk about, you know, selling baked goods if there was a need, you know, we're going to, but our vision is way beyond business and money. Our vision is community, our vision is, you know, like when we, when we went to the hearing in Shelby County about six acres, it was just kind of like in everybody's mind that we were coming just to, you know, who cares what everybody, we're going to do our thing. I was trying to get them to understand that, no, if you don't want bright lights, we won't have bright lights. If you don't want this or that, because that's why we're here. We're here to, to do business how it used to be done, in my opinion. Not just like it or want it thing, but, but, yeah, that's our motto. Growing relationships and it's a family-run business. But we would like to have a building there where we, where we construct buildings. We build our own buildings and assemble things. And it's, it's a, it's not this huge thing. We have two employees. And it's, it's a low-key, it's not a big industrial thing. But the rest of it, there'd be a, go ahead.
You had said something to me about, I thought this was, found this interesting, that a lot of the homeowners association accept your buildings and your stuff?
Well, it's, you know, I, I, I'm careful to say it, but I don't want to talk anybody else down or especially, you know, I don't know. But the portable buildings came in about 30 years ago at a flood. And, and everybody, everybody wanted to have one. And so that created a lot of need. And people were waiting a year, two years for a portable building, so everybody wanted to get to the market. Well, anytime that happens, that there's nothing to, to, you know, to look over, the, the product of that will go down because there's such a need that people are just plugging in from any, any corner wherever. And so that's what happened. The portable buildings, when you think of a portable building, you think of some half rotten thing.
Shed.
Corner, we don't like the word shed, but, but, yeah, that's what, the shed and then the floor is rotten out. And people would love to get rid of that, but don't know what to do with that, and you can't move it to this, too. And so we, so there's a lot of that out there. But we want to take the, the, the building industry, we did take it to the next level. And that's using quality materials, we have a 50-year warranty. And it's, it's, we're trying to, we ran into the homeowners association because people see our, we pay our building to shows and people see them and they're like, you know, I never would have thought I'd have a shed in my backyard, but I didn't see that get in my backyard. But now there's an HOA that says I can't. So there in Ohio, we've been having them present to their HOA, what about timberland buildings? And we've had them switch to you're allowed to have, they, they can't say you're allowed to have only timberland, but you're allowed to have portable buildings once they got their, their addition established. Just knowing that, you know, a portable building or a shed is, can be more than just this, this Home Depot thing that's designed to fall apart. And so that's our, that's our vision. To just have a building that's, you know, and the reputation for, for building lots is another thing that we noticed right out of the gate. So what, what happened, so we studied this out to see what's going on and there's, I'm not talking about everybody, there's a lot of good people doing this out there. And we have a lot of good competition, but thankfully, a lot of the competition isn't good. Because what will happen is somebody will get, well, in fact, it's happening right now on 952. I wanted to buy that spot and there was back and forth and back, and he was super busy, couldn't get anything. And then this other guy offered him to rent it. And he didn't feel like he could back him out, it was a friend of his or something. But so if someone that moves in, so he told me, the owner of that, told me that it's, it's through May, he has through May. Well, we're past that, no, April, I think. And then all the buildings will be gone. That was a contract, it was a six-month contract. And that's what they're used to. The contract, hey, here's a piece of land that we don't know what to do with. Or we're trying to sell it, or we're holding on to it for the city to come out, or whatever the reason is. And so if we can get a shed lot, because they don't need anything, they just need, I mean, like there, just land. Dump, dump, he says, now there's no money involved except for what you pay the landlord, you don't have to do nothing to the ground, you don't have electricity, you don't have to, and they don't man them, there's nobody there. And, and I, to be honest, I don't know how they go it, I don't know how he's doing there. But with that, with that quick deal, since there's not much invested, you don't really need to do well. And so you don't need to make things look nice, it's just kind of, hey, let's put them here, let's put them here and call this guy on this morning, I called the key mark that it's shut down, we can put them in there, you know, that's how they do it. And then the problem with that is, then when, you know, Sean Hart or whoever calls and says, hey, I'm selling this thing tomorrow, your building's going to go, he's out of there. And the guy that bought the shed is like, well, hey, you know, I got a problem, I don't know where to go. So it's, it's bad for the business because you don't need to be as accountable, because you know you're going to be there for a year. And a lot of people do that professionally, they go into places like Key Mark's that shut down and they set up in front for one year and then they're, they're completely gone. And so our businesses are, we set them and they're, they're there for the long haul, that's the vision. And they're always manned, they always have someone there to, to deal with the customers. And it's not just a, we want it to be an experience, we want someone to enjoy coming out. And just kind of, and it happens in Ohio all the time, there's, there's children playing on the swing sets and there's, and we do community things, you know. So it's just a, it's a different, so if you're in their mind, you're thinking, we don't want another shed dealer or shed lot. Now, I completely understand you and agree with you, but I'm saying this is not what this is going to be. The sheds are kind of a back thing. And the playset, all that kind of the focus of the business and.
You build the indoor furniture and?
Yeah, all poly, it's all, it's all the best that we can get. But that's all that we can find, that we can get and we use. And.
Are you comfortable to like what they have over at Millroy?
It is, but we're, they are without, they're a little lower end than we will be.
Oh.
Now, if that's because, now I'm talking about the stuff that we're going to sell. They have indoor furniture, too, and that's probably about as high as you can get. But I've been over there and I've seen them at shows and they're probably, they probably have what sells, but we're not going to buckle to that.
You're going to hold yourself to a higher standard.
Right, and if, if it's, if it's above someone's pay scale, then, you know. But that's another thing, people like, our, our main competition is Berlin Gardens and Luxtrap. And they're twice the price as us.
Berlin Gardens. That's my last name. That's my last name. But I don't have anything to do with shit.
But, yeah, and, and we're, we're always open to, you know, if anybody, anybody, you don't have to be somebody, just, you know, hey, this is, you know, what about this or what about that?
You'll be part of the community.
Yeah, that's our, that's been our vision even before this.
So are these sheds custom ordered? So we, how mu, like, what will your inventory be like? You filling up your whole property with sheds, or you're going to have 20?
So that's a good question. And the reason why it's a good question is because of the guy on 952.
Well, there's other spots, too, that you just see them all at every angle and, you know.
The, the best way to do it, because you'll, you'll know as soon as we start that our, our goal is to make it look good. But the best, we do do custom sheds and that's probably 70% of our, our shit, our business.
Yeah.
But there's a time in the spring and fall where people want now. And so we do have, we try to have a lot of sheds there.
Yeah.
But, but it's not, we don't just drop them. We have them rowed up and we got this all approved at the county on this other lot. But they tried to say, you know, you have, or they did say, you have to have colors together and all that, I'm not sure how that will work. But it's, it's, I, I know you, you don't know me, but I care about how it looks way more than anybody else. And so we will have a, will have probably two rows in the back and it, and it can look really nice. Especially if you put like sheds together, you got all your, your porch sheds over here and your, you know, just, it, it looks good, it's good quality, you can tell it from the roof. And then probably one, and we're not sure how we're going to do it yet, but it's, the way we have it in Ohio, we have two rows on the backside and then one along the side.
Yeah.
And it just, it looks really good. And then when one sells, you know, the hole there, and we, we keep them all in the same, same locations. We're not just dumping one here or one there.
All your building will be inside?
Everything will be inside, all the, our, our goal would be that all the materials and everything would be inside. There may be a lean-to where we'd have treated stuff, but I'd like for everything to be inside completely, if that, if that was an option, but. Get all the inside.
You're not, they have an entrance off US 52. And they might want another entrance off that River Road at some point. But you're basically talking box, box trucks, semis and?
Well, there's, we've always only dealt with flatbed trailers until just recently. But either way, our guys are really good. I know you probably won't believe me, but he, he does, in Ohio, there's a huge highway that's right in front of us and he has the entire thing stopped up while he backs in. And it's only eight seconds. So that's why I would like an entrance off the River Road, so that's second, because no one wants to wait a second. Is, is off 52. And we have been getting our metal orders on a semi just in the last two or three months. And we're trying to get that changed just because it's more expensive for us. But it's, it's pretty flawless. What I'd like to have is a large entrance off of River Road. That would actually somewhat be, there wouldn't really be an entrance, it'd be kind of just gravelled into the road. And then it's super easy, you don't even have to slow down hardly.
Just slide in.
Just slide in and, and pull back out. That'd be the, because dealing with truckers, it used to be truckers knew how to drive. Now it seems like, ooh, you need to have part of, sort of the space and just dealing with all that. So we want to do it right the first time. And we're not sure exactly how that all is going to be, but. There's a big tree there, we're trying to figure out what to do with, we like trees and don't really want to cut them down, but.
I was, I was, I was depressed because he continued to talk about an expanding business as time goes on with different things.
How big a property are we talking?
Well, gain and sell, that's what's high dollars.
No, how big? Yeah. Four acres, okay.
It'd be about 120 square. And with the surveyor, hasn't come out there yet?
You're talking about raising cows.
Well, we already raised cows, it'd be just, we live just, just south of there.
They've built a bunch of new houses. This is, you're Menonai, right?
We're not, but people call it.
Okay. Okay, but they, they built a bunch of new houses down in Batons and different places over in that area.
Yeah, all of the Mission Field, we six years got back and our church back here was way too big. And so they wanted to do an outreach, and so myself and.
What number 540, 36 acres or? 36 acres or something like 40 acres down there?
How many, how many acres is, you guys buy, 34 around there?
Six hundred and five.
Oh, wow, okay.
So, okay.
And I'll tell you, all the houses I've seen down there is quality homes, they look beautiful homes.
So, I'm just, so we, we have a new zoning book. And you, that property is now zoned agriculture. I'm going down through the new book. Would this be considered manufacturing, fabricating and assembly general?
General.
But nothing, no manufacturing or fabricated in our new book that we passed is allowed.
Was it general?
When I talked to Nadine, we were going to buy the old book, I believe. But now this property is going to be zoned ag, right?
I thought that, just a couple of years ago, we were going to put a welding shop there.
Yeah, it was.
Well, that was before we did a new book.
And then we were going to change that land.
Now, I went through this matrix and did the best I could to try to make it same, I might have missed that.
Well, and then we're going to get into this, too. It was own, it was own general business, right?
Well, in the old?
Yep. Did we notify the property owner, we were changing the zoning and?
Well, I mean, I'm, I'm hearing so many different things of what we need to do, I don't know what to do anymore.
Right here?
Yeah, that's ag, right?
General business?
General business.
Oh, then I was looking at the wrong property.
Because right there is Blue River Road, so it sits right there off of Blue River Road.
That's not the map that they?
This is the only one I've got, it's the proposed one, so.
Why am I seeing green on the one they sent?
221, 22?
Well, if you see green, that's plan unit.
I, hold on. I just want to make sure we get it straight before we.
There's, there's going to be some differing things there.
Draft proposed, proposed zoning. And I got green.
Is that never run, that's the light green?
Yeah, so I got ag.
Did we change it?
I thought we changed it to ag.
I mean, we might have.
I don't think you legally change it unless you talk to the property owner.
We need to get that clarified tonight when we go through the passage.
Yeah. So, I think that's, I think it's general business where it is.
So what didn't allow the manufacturing?
Ag. Which I believe would be a mistake on my, on, when we, because I filled out the matrix the best I could. And that may be a mistake on my part, which.
Because that's general business all the way from Freidenberg to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That, that may be a mistake and may, I don't, our attorney's not here, I don't.
I can tell you it's going to be a mistake because the property owner would sue you over that. Changing, that changes the value of his property. So.
Or if you get ag and the price is coming down, we can change it afterwards.
Thank you so much, now we're going to get a break.
I'll get the order keys to cover, balance that out. We'll check into that, though.
But something, because lane map's different than mine.
I remember there being something of a change.
Now, is that map, did you get that Dropbox email of everything when they were done?
Yeah, this was when they came on, this dated 221.
What, what's mine dated? Mine is dated 4.
So that might have been after we went through and talked.
Yeah, mine is dated April 3rd.
They do a second reading tonight, so I don't know.
Well, planning commission needs to make a recommendation to change that back to what it was, general business.
I recommend that.
But, um.
I'll second, you second it?
There's no zone of what it was anymore, so we got to go back and think about it.
Well, we don't think, think about it with the property owner out there, I can tell you that.
I understand, but you got, you can't just.
Yep, here's, here's the deal, Jess, what we do is we pass it in this meeting and take it to the next meeting.
Hey, we've got a motion and a second to make a recommendation to the council to make that property general business. All in favor?
Yeah, this one right here.
Do you remember talking about that?
Aye.
You seconded it?
I did.
This shows, I don't have agriculture on here, so.
Well.
Better state than sorry to do anything.
Yeah, there's no ag on this.
I still don't, I didn't recommend it.
There's no ag on here.
No, I don't have it on.
Well, that's the one on 221, though. So we need to look at the one that he's got.
Right.
I don't have the other one.
Okay, we'll take that over to the council.
We're getting confused. Now, this right here, this is an old one. Like you said, it's 221, I remember where.
I just remember talking about the map and making sure we could change it to whatever we wanted.
Right.
Now, well, now all of a sudden, we have to have the property owner approve, I don't, I never heard that.
I can assure you, you will have. Because what you're doing.
Remember you guys went through and you said you want to change it to this, change it to that? Remember what's said about?
Nothing was ever said about property owners.
So that's, I'm just confused. Why we need the attorney here, I understand.
Well, here's the deal, if I own 100 acres beside town and you change zoning on me when I paid to have that 100 acres in a general business plot, I'm going to sue you.
Well, I, I understand that, but why didn't our attorney point that out when we did that that night?
It's, zoning's a thing that you just don't change on somebody, you know what I'm saying?
But that's not the discussion we had at the previous meeting.
I think our people should have said, well, you can't do that.
That wasn't said, it should have been said.
Right, they see.
That's why I'm so pissed off right now, because I'm confused.
So let's bring it up at the council.
So it's getting changed back.
Something we can put in before this thing gets, that 90 day, oh, it's got 30 days now, to be solidified.
Well, from what I'm seeing right now, there's some things that need to be fixed. Stuff I'm being told that, you know, for one thing, the ag.
It's not even on there.
Well, that's, that's the wrong map. You know, I know that meeting we had, everybody went through and said we're going to change that to ag, nobody said anything, that we couldn't do that. And then I honestly made a mistake that said no manufacturing. Now we have this gentleman here.
Well, it's changed back now, well, it's, it's the council.
We're going to check into all this, okay, so we have a little, our attorney couldn't be here this evening due to our family concerns or illness, so.
So my question is, what'd you change it back to, the original?
General business.
But that's not in our new book, when I'm told we're supposed to be going by a new book.
What's it called, the new book? Would it be called the new book?
Well, I got to go look. Then the question would be, did I make a mistake? You know? Let's see. So the old one was general business, right?
Is this the 52 portal ramp?
Yeah. So they call that B2. Which would be light, or like a, the middle pink. So if I go to B2. If you're going to, you're going to have to go back, it's not called B2. This is called B2, so. So on B2. Where is that? It's not allowed in B2 either.
It's not in that zone, is what you're saying.
Not in that zone.
What zone is it in? Can you tell?
Well, it's, if you go by our old book.
Our ag, oh, no, I'm, I'm concerned about the new ones, so we know what that, what it needs to be and then what we need to, what do we need to redefine it as?
We need to fix our matrix.
Yeah, but what zone is it in?
Well, you guys called it ag, but I didn't fill out the matrix right.
But there's got to be a zone that fits in.
There is, ag or B2, but I didn't put the dot in the right, I, I left the dot out. It's my fault.
We're industrial. We have a brand new book, this is what's happening, so we are.
In the middle passage of it, it just started. It hasn't been filed yet.
Yeah, if manufacturing isn't industrial.
So they, they sent me this matrix and I filled it out the best I could, tried to keep, and I missed that.
Well, we're still in, we're still in 90-day review, so we can make phone calls to.
Is Brian coming tonight?
No, he's got a family emergency.
No, the other Brian.
On H.
No, you're out of town, so we're stopping this phone call. All right, let's, 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 we've got some homework to do, we've got to, we'll have to call Brian and discuss this with them before we have the book.
Yeah, because there's a lot of misinformation. You know, I clearly remember us just sitting there, we can change it to that zone, that zone and that zone, nobody said we couldn't do that. Now I'm hearing different tonight. So I'm confused.
All right, all right, well. Okay, where do we, where do you want to go with this? We're going to talk to our town attorney, we're going to talk to our, the HBC. We're gonna talk to our town attorney, we're gonna talk to our, the HWC, who we're working with, who's redoing our book. So we're gonna take care of some of these issues that we have, but, um, go on. I'm gonna have him work with you after we talk to Brian, so that, so that, um-
Yeah.
That we, he has a contact, so that he doesn't have to come to every meeting.
Yeah, I think, I don't see, it shouldn't be a problem what you wanna do, but I filled out the matrix wrong. So I don't know what we do about that.
Yeah, it's not in ninety days, it's not a zone yet, we've got sixty days left.
Sixty days left over to, to make final adjustments, whether it be contested or somebody come up with a situation. That's what this ninety day period is for, we just got lucky, as far as I'm concerned.
Yeah, so thank you.
Yeah, yes. Because this would have gone through, he hadn't shown up, and then somebody else would have come up, or he would have come up, uh, in August.
Yeah.
And we're like, oh, we can't do that. And then we had more troubles. So we can move, we can move along.
Well, for his benefit, we just, he needs to realize we're gonna change it to where we have to change it.
Yeah.
I, I think there's, I don't think there's anybody opposed to you coming to town. I mean, I'm, I'm sure that's what you're looking for, is a weapon for, you know, to say, hey, is this all right? Does this seem like a viable thing for our town? And I would, I mean, I don't hear anybody posting any negative information.
We also need to change it as soon as possible, because that allows you to go forward with, with-
Right.
So.
We have contact information from you.
I know.
Dave does. Yeah, I got your phone number.
Okay.
Okay.
Yes, Dave, that's you, Jesse Merlin, he's our, uh, planning director, instructor. He'll, he'll be, give you the contact information, so you can work with them. And we'll have, we have a little bit of homework to do, but we should be able to-
Sure, I'll clear this up. Recently.
Move forward.
We got HWC to talk to, we got Brian to talk to.
HWC.
HWC, um, talk to.
But you know, this makes me wonder what else I- We need to change the, if I got Flat Rock River on there too, that needs to be changed, Blue River, I've done a lot of little things. I'm just wondering what else I missed.
You know what, we'll probably miss one or two more things. Don't get upset about it, we'll have to fix it.
Well, I just-
We'll have to fix it. I mean, how, that's, you're more not frozen, we're not frozen this.
From what's going on here, that's for sure.
So, you're, you're wanting us to give you your blessing, we've got plans, we've gotta bring all that forward, right? Going to our book and-
Yeah, um, everything can be pretty simple as far as starting off, but, um, yeah, what do you need from me exactly?
We're gonna talk, you're gonna work with Jesse, 'cause we have a book, a brand new book, and you'll have to go buy the book. Okay?
And if the book is wrong, we need to make it right.
That's what I'm trying to say.
But you'll need to submit a layout plan?
Yeah, you know, it's kind of location improvement for me.
Sure.
Yeah.
Which will mean-
And the water surge, I've, we already got that handled, so.
We had water before and there was discussion about sewer before, we weren't sure what was gonna happen. It seems like a change.
Well, actually, you couldn't hook into it, 'cause it's a forced main, we've got that worked out, EJP, that can hook right into it, it's no problem.
Great. All right, sir.
Yeah, okay, let her try to-
Okay, so we're gonna connect you with Jesse after the meeting, okay? We gotta talk to him. All right, thank you.
Yes, and I do have to go, I have a church meeting.
Yep.
That's all right.
You can just get ahold of Dave, we'll get the audience.
Yeah, that's fine.
Or you can send me in the information.
We can-
Here, I can give you my number.
I can take it here.
Okay, we're moving along, would you like to step forward?
I'm not gonna be a twelve foot, and, and, but, but Mr. Graham Maturi, because I got him the other day, he was serving.
There you go.
I'm from Indianapolis, Marston, Molly, uh, which were down Blue River.
Thank you, bud. We'll get it.
We have a little blue sign on the opposite side, it says Blue River Field or something, I don't know, Air, Airfield. We want to put a sign on, would, would it be his property, I heard I talked to him.
Okay.
And he said that would be great, but we'd like to get a variance, uh, right now, the off-site sign limit is four square feet, two by two. We want to get a variance and make it a four by four, and I've got a couple examples. This is, I find, we're gonna make more if I need to, I mean, this is one that's, uh, up in Greenfield, of a church, it's off-site, and it's a four by four, and then move this as well as we'll play. So that's all I'm asking for, is just approval to get a, a variance on that. And by the way, you're all invited down to the field anytime, if you see guys down there, we actually put you up on an airplane and let you fly. It's kind of a bribe.
We take the kids over there, I saw them.
In my backyard, I love it.
We have, we have a event, uh, once a month, and the next one, I think it's June the eighth, and it's just, it's open to public to come and watch.
Will there be a lighted sign?
Right.
Will it be lighted?
No, no, will not be lighted, it's just, uh, it's got, uh, you know, white, white posts on the side and, or, or-
Oh, that's nice.
So it's, it's just a little bit more visible than that little blue sign, if you've ever seen it on the other side of the road. So, most people that are coming to farm in the field don't even know this sign exists.
It's hard to find.
Okay, so Jesse, what's our, this is, we're in a brand new book here that we're just working on.
I was just now looking it up.
So right now, if it's four square feet, and I was, but we can get a, a variance to get a four by four.
Another question I got for you. If it's set on fifty-two, have you got the state? If it's set, how close you gonna go the road to the state?
Well, I'll find out to them, but I'm just taking the first start. And I can, I can vary with you. You signed okay, good, go ahead with that. Oh, okay, I can sample that, yeah, gotcha.
Okay.
So we get into again, what's that zone?
Well, that's, it's property that we're looking at, but you know, it's looking at-
Oh, it's property.
Yeah, that's the thing, I gotcha.
So what'd you say, you, it says, uh-
Four square feet, right now, it's what they, uh, four and a two all square. We just wanna see if we can get a variance for four by four, which is sixteen square feet.
Maximum sign area per lineal foot of building or tenant frontage.
Uh, it's, it's, it's an off-site sign, it's, it's, it's not, it's not on our building, it's, it's off-site, so it would be something-
Well, this is a permanent sign. I'm, I don't think you need a variance, is what I'm trying to get at. So like, maximum sign area per lineal foot of building or tenant frontage.
Oh, man, you've got a bunch of frontage.
So you get, the average number is two point two five square foot of sign per lineal foot.
A frontage.
A frontage.
You guys, um-
Well, we don't own that property, that is gonna be-
But where you're at, the frontage.
Somebody else's property, yes, it's gonna be-
The frontage is your property.
Barry's, the guy that's-
It says for tenant, so-
We're putting the sign on the corner of the property, the variance looking to body.
So, I would say it means frontage, uh, would that be along fifty-two, right?
Right.
What is that, two hundred feet? So you get two hundred times, you get four hundred square foot of sign, the way this thing is written.
Think you're okay?
It's a big sign.
Don't think you're gonna make a sign?
You know, if you go to the lowest one, it's one point seven five. And if it's two hundred feet, you still got two hundred square foot of sign you need to put up. So, uh, with our new book, which I'm told we're supposed to go by, you do not need a variance. Does that make sense?
Right, so I do need to talk to the state to get their approval, because it's gonna be on fifty-two.
Right.
And it's according to what you said on fifty-two, if you come back, but if it's out there near the road.
Right.
Now, we may have some other rules.
You have to get a state permit.
We have, if I can get your email address, I can send you everything we have on signage. Um, but like, if you're here just for the size of it.
You can send me all of it, right?
I mean, there's some maximum heights of like twelve foot and-
Can I write it down for you, or?
Yeah, just write it down right here. On Main Street there.
Running corporation?
Oh, D-T-A sign. We are sort of maximum height of sign, D-T-A sign height, maximum, so if it's ag, you get thirty-six or, or maximum height as well.
Brian, they told me we're not supposed to talk about something unless the person's here, John's not here.
Yeah.
Okay, you're, you're good, if Jesse, if you can get ahold of Jesse, um, if you need his number, he's gonna hold the lane at the town, he's got you guys. Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming up tonight. Okay, we have running corporation, but they're not here?
Not here.
We can't even discuss it.
Brian said we shouldn't discuss it, there's liability.
Okay. Makes everything-
They're not here, okay, so Brian's not here legal, does anybody have any miscellaneous? Your motion for adjournment?
Move to adjourn.
All in favor?
All right.
All right.
So first thing I wanna do is, um-
Let me see, one last thing.